Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Saco City Council meeting for Monday, December 8th, 2025. First off, before we start the regular meeting, we do have a workshop this evening, and we do have Administrator Cole Prescott with us, as well as Director Toomey, to go over some housing initiatives and bills before we start our housing action plan coming up. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you for hosting us here this evening. We thought it would be important to share what we're seeing on the state's side of things and what we're going to be doing with staff internally to get us ready for ordinance amendment processes into 2026. So I'm glad to have Code Enforcement Director David Toomey here with me this evening. We've been already looking at tabletop exercises internally with staff on some of these bills, so I'm just going to run you through them very briefly, and we're here to collect questions so that we can address them at future meetings. We certainly won't have all the answers tonight, but... So there's been recent housing legislation. A lot of what you see before you, what I provided, is a list of what we've been tracking closely as staff since the springtime of this year. We also sent this to the Long Range Planning Committee on June 23rd and followed up with them. Would it have been all guessed right, Dave?
Yes.
And then we provided some info at a September 22nd Council Joint Meeting with Planning Board, and again, October 6th Council Joint Meeting with Long Range Planning Committee. And we also did have a legislative update from the legislators directly a couple months ago, I believe. So the major bills here that we're tracking are those listed in bold. Perhaps the two most impactful here will be LD 1498, as well as LD 1829. LD 1498, an Act to Limit Municipal Impact Fees on Housing Development, it's about halfway down your page, will require us to take a look at how we're collecting impact fees today, how we're using them, how we're going to be encumbering them into our capital improvement plan through this budget season and going forward. And we'll also have additional data from the state, as an impact fee report was due to the state legislature in December. So we're tracking that pretty closely. That one could have some impacts as to how we collect impact fees, when we collect impact fees, and how they're used as far as the timeline for use of those fees. You may have questions. I won't have all answers, but I'm happy to take any questions specifically to that, and I'll ask Dave if he has anything else to add here.
No, it's just going to be more keeping track of what we have and when we spend it, so we make sure it's not there for too long.
And we'll need to make sure that we follow the new state law requires us to encumber the impact fee within one year, so we will be looking to encumber the impact fee to the capital improvement program, make sure that it fits well into programming, and then look for any updates from the state as they come available.
Great, thank you. Anyone have any questions or comments? Councilor Johnston?
Thank you. So that wouldn't allow the municipality to kind of squirrel away an impact fee towards a project later down the road?
It would. We are reading this as they just have to be encumbered to a project within one year, or encumbered to a capital plan project within one year.
Thanks for clarifying.
And I should just put the disclaimer on all this, that Dave and I are waiting for rulemaking from the state on a lot of these, so this is as far as what we know as of today. And it's actually one of the reasons why we don't have draft red lines for you yet, is we are waiting for the state rulemaking process on some of these before we make changes to our ordinance. Dave is keeping tabs on that through his association work as far as any red lines that come through and working on comments with the Building Officers Association.
Thank you, anyone else? Councilor Edwards?
Do we have any impact fees at this time that are not encumbered?
I wouldn't say that we have any impact fees that are necessarily not encumbered. We collect impact fees for specific purposes, but we have to do that analysis in-house to see how things need to change, if things need to change, and making sure that we're following the requirements for the timelines.
Right, thank you.
Councilor Onan.
What's the current impact fee revenue that we get per year? Do we have an idea of just what the average number is?
I don't have it for the whole community, because we collect impact fees for various items. However, per building permit, it's about...
About $9,000 if it's on sewer and $3,124 if it's off on septic.
Is that per lot or per project?
Per new house.
Per new house.
And we do about 50 houses a year, 50 to 60.
Okay.
But we also have impact fees for sewer for all commercial work, too, which is even higher, so that one would be a lot more.
Would those go right back and get rolled into the expense of putting in the sewer and putting in the infrastructure? In theory, right?
In theory.
Yes, all the impact...
I don't control it, so I'm not sure.
Absolutely.
That is correct, though, especially the sewer impact fees. We rewrote the ordinance a few years ago, so all of the sewer impact fees are directly encumbered into the capital program for debt repayoff.
Councilor Johnston?
It's more of a comment. I just don't really understand. This seems to be a lot about nothing. My understanding has been that impact fees in municipalities have had to have a dedicated purpose.
It's not so much... Oh, may I address that? It's not so much about the dedicated purpose, it's more about the timeline in which they have to be used, so we're just trying to make sure everyone's aware.
Yeah, like I said, I'm not concerned about the city of Saco. I just, I don't understand what folks in Augusta, their intent was here. I guess I'll have to save that question for those folks. It seems to be a lot of these items that continually crop up year after year seem to be creating more havoc for municipalities, but that's, again, just my opinion.
So...
Anyone else?
Should I move on to the next one here? So the next one that we have bolded here is an Act to Build Housing for Main Families and Attract Workers to Main Businesses by Amending the Laws Governing Housing Density. That's LD 1829. It's the last one on the sheet of paper that I distributed. And I do have copies of these LDs. I just didn't know if you wanted me to print them all out for you, but we have a whole packet, a PDF packet, that we can send, especially for the new councilors. An overview of this bill, and I'm just going to ask Dave to jump in at any time if I forget something or leave something out. Removes certain sprinkling requirements for accessory dwelling units. It allows for 14-foot additional height for buildings for affordable housing proposals, so you can go 14 feet above the maximum height allowance for the zone. Significantly reduces lot size requirements for lots in growth areas connected to public sewer, so we're talking about 5,000 square feet lots, which in some places in the community we may have a requirement to have 10,000 square feet lots. We will no longer be allowed to require 10,000 square foot lots in growth areas connected to public sewer. There'll be 1,250 square foot per dwelling unit density. Right now in our downtown, we have a 1,500 square foot per dwelling unit density, so citywide, everywhere you're in a growth area connected to public sewer, it'll be 1,250 square foot per dwelling unit. We will not be able to require a larger density. It would result in fewer units per local zoning. This will also exempt planning board review for four or more dwelling units within a structure. It will remove residential requirements for ADUs, meaning, that means, that's my language, and that means that it removes the requirement that the owner has to live on site for accessory dwelling units. It revises the definition of subdivision from three to five dwelling units, and compliance is required by July 1st of 2027. Again, some of this will be clarified and changed through the rulemaking process, so this is what we know for right now. Additionally, during the research that we've done with our new city planner, we've also identified that this would limit the lot size that could be required in Saco to 20,000 square feet. Right now, we have certain areas that may require 80,000 square feet. Do you want to talk about that at all, Dave?
That's the RC zone. We have, it's basically almost two acres, 1.7, and if that goes down to 20,000, which is the minimum state for a septic system, so the lot sizes will get smaller. This impacts morely in town. The 1250 is actually for the first four lots and buildings, and then after that, it's 5,000, so you can get four lots on a 5,000, or four houses on a 5,000 square foot lot. And that's...
You would need another 5,000 for the fifth, right? Yep.
Thank you. Any questions on any of those?
Again, I understand, I'm not trying to kill the messenger, I just, I don't understand why we have a local zoning ordinance if it's going to be dictated to us by those folks in Augusta. Some of these things are ridiculous. As somebody that spent hours upon hours doing the zoning ordinance revision process, to then, a few short years later, have the state come to us and, again, dictate what we can do, it's absurd to me. But, again, that's my opinion. I just, some of these, I understand for newer folks here, these are substantial impacts, and I've yet to see how any of this is going to actually create affordable housing. So that's typical government, certainly at the state level, where it's like, we're just going to throw a whole bunch of stuff out there and hope it works instead of actually focusing on what the real challenges are. Thank you.
And you are entirely right, and I can tell you, that is the overall feeling of most municipalities within the state, especially municipalities of our size comparable to us. And as the leaders on my mayor's coalition, we are working advocateally to address those issues with Augusta. It's, because they are. They're starting to Big Brother. It's becoming more and more obvious, and it is an issue, and that's why we wanted to make sure we brought all these forward.
I appreciate to hear that. I just, I don't understand where these elected leaders in each municipality, why we're left out of the process. Literally, maybe you get a random email here and there where it's already through the process, they don't come down, they don't meet with us and say, "These are the things we're thinking about." They get crammed through right as soon as the folks are elected, and nobody knows what comes out of it. All of a sudden, you find out after the fact, and it has major impacts for the community. It's, it's a broken system.
Yep, we can certainly work more towards, with our state representatives, to let us know, because we either do find out late or after the process, especially public hearings. You know, we have an opportunity to speak at every public hearing through a bill process, and yet we find out after or if the time's not available. But we certainly can work more with our state representatives to provide us with updated information. Councilor Hewitt?
A question for Dave. Is there concern, looking at these proposed, that it's going to tax our infrastructure, the water, the sewer? Are we going to be able to meet the demand, given these new constraints?
Sewer, with a new treatment plan, I think we'd be fine. Water, they always say we have capacity, but anytime a new division goes in, the pressure goes down, so they'll have to work on their systems, but yes.
So just if I can add to that as well, because it's difficult for Dave and me to, and we can, we can have a broader conversation in January. We're planning to bring some more staff in to talk about impacts, so we don't want to speak for our water resource or our water friends. There are sections of the city that we have planned, as far as long-term plans and studies, based on what we have today for zoning. And we've put a growth factor on it, but we don't put a four times growth factor. Now, will every lot develop under this new law? No, but it will have the potential to be much more dense in certain areas that the city did not look out ahead for. So we can't, I mean, we might have areas where we might not have capacity issues, but we can't really say that right now, because long-term, our plans and studies are all generally built on our comprehensive plan and our zoning and putting a growth factor on what the zoning has for right now.
Thank you.
Have we also reviewed briefly, I know we'll get more in depth as these go further along, but matching these against our comprehensive plan to see what may go against certain areas?
We are in the process of doing that. There's nothing, I shouldn't say there's no, there, I think the 20,000 square foot lot, we're going to have to analyze that to see how that'll fit in or not fit in with the comprehensive plan.
We'll have to wait for the state to decide what the terminology of growth zone is, because some, some may think one thing and someone else, because we had someone who said, where we had a low-growth zone, they thought, hey, it says growth, I should be able to do what I want, and they said, they said, "It's low growth." Well, it's the word growth, so we need the definitions, and that's what they're doing now with rulemaking.
Okay. Anyone else, any questions or comments?
I think there's a couple others that I should highlight before we finish up, but I'm happy to take questions right now.
Yep, you want to break it up a little bit on this section right here?
Yeah.
Councilor Gail?
I was just going to ask about ones that maybe you're going to get to.
I was really focusing on the, the bolded ones here. I didn't want to keep us here too long, but there are some on here that we will be looking at to see how impactful they will be. One of those is to limit parking spaces, so the first one, LD 427, will limit parking spaces required for residential proposals in growth areas to more, no more than one off-street parking unit, or parking area per dwelling unit, and it looks like we have a little typo there, so I'll get that fixed. Also looks at parking agreement requirements, if you're going to have shared parking spaces. LD 970 is also on there. 997 is another one we're looking at pretty closely, which overrides local zoning. It'll allow housing in commercial districts under certain parameters. We're really trying to understand what rulemaking will come out with this one, because there's a lot of questions the local planners had, and I'm sure the code officers had, about the definitions of commercial, industrial, and mixed-use areas from the state perspective. And then we're also trying to follow the resolve directing, so 1246, directing a working group to review the process of setting impact fees. I'm not sure if they finished their report. I believe it was due in December. And so those are the major ones. We're following mostly everything here, and then I should just mention that there's a, there's a work session on December 10th that we've been notified of for LD 1926, which looks at workforce housing and puts density bonuses in place for workforce housing percentages, so you'll get different types of density bonuses for different types of area median income percentages for housing. Right now, LD 2003 looks at, once you do 51% affordable housing, then you can tap into a 2.5 times density bonus, so you take your base density and you multiply that times 2.5. This bill that's going through work session, not yet approved, so it's not yet on your sheet, will look at increasing the base density based on your area median income, and it goes up to a 220% area median income for a 30% base density bonus. And we're trying to understand if that's going to mean base density from local zoning or base density of LD 2003, or base density of LD 2003 and 1829.
Any additional questions or comments?
So the next steps on our end is we're going to be having an internal, like, staff tabletop exercise, like we did for LD 2003, probably in January, once Ryan Pelletier comes onboard. And then we will be asking Phil Saucier to come make a presentation from the legal perspective and aspect of these bills here, and he's our consulting attorney that we use for land use items. And then we will be drafting, we'll finish drafting up red lines and bring them to you all for review, as well as to the Long Range Planning Committee and the Planning Board. And also make sure any edits happen to this sheet and get them, get it redistributed for you.
Okay, great. Thank you very much for the updates.
Thank you.
And Councilor Johnson, as I get information as it comes through, once they start getting into session, I will pass that along to council. Okay, that concludes the workshop meeting. We'd like to call our regular meeting to order at 6:50 PM. Would like to make note of all councilors present, including Administrator Prescott with us this evening, and would you please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Okay, moving on to item number four, there is nothing under general this evening. Item number five is committee correspondence to council. Are there any councilors wishing to speak? Okay, not seeing anyone seeking recognition. Moving on to item six, that is public comment. If you would like to address council, please step up to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and you will have three minutes to speak. address for the record, and you will have three minutes to speak.
Hello, everyone. Kelly Archer, 185 Bradley Street. I want to thank the agenda this evening. I also was going to bring up the due process as far as notification. And I'm glad that this Chapter Four is going to be moved to next week for your consideration. And I do appreciate that the two new councilors will have extra time to bring their insight to this Chapter Four, as well as all the other council members. And staff has already brought months' worth of information as far as the Chapter Four. So I look forward to your consideration and your deliberation and bring it forth to the rest of the council. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Okay, not seeing anyone seeking recognition. Moving on to item seven, that is the approval of the minutes. Two items for November 17th, 2025, and November 2024, November 24th, 2025. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Motion made by Councilor Edwards. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Parks. Any discussion on the minutes? Okay, roll call vote. Councilor Edwards?
Yes.
Councilor Parks?
Yes.
Councilor Anan?
Yes.
Councilor Gale?
Yes.
Councilor Hewitt?
Yes.
And Council Johnson?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0. Okay, moving on to item eight, under consent items, there are two items. Item A is the confirmation of the interim city administrator's appointment of the communications director. Item DB is to confirm the mayor's reappointments to the zoning board of appeals of George Starr Jr., Brad Paul, and Richard Parker. Is there a motion to approve the consent?
So moved.
Motion made by Council Johnson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Council Hewitt. Any discussion on the consent items or wishing to move one? Okay, roll call vote. Councilor Edwards?
Yes.
Councilor Parks?
Yes.
Councilor Anan?
Yes.
Councilor Gale?
Yes.
Councilor Hewitt?
Yes.
And Council Johnson?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0. Okay, moving on to item nine, that is the action items. And there is one, which is the public hearing for the reschedule of the proposed updates to Administrative Code, Chapter Four, Article Five, Departments and Divisions, and that is Council Johnson.
Thank you. At several previous meetings, city staff presented proposed updates to Chapter Four, Article Five, Departments and Divisions of City Ordinance, along with a crosswalk document for reference. The purpose of this initiative is to update the ordinance to reflect current operations. As mentioned, during the August 25th new business review, this proposed amendment has been shared with senior staff, whose edits have been incorporated into this document for reference purposes. The link is available on eCode. It has been brought to staff's attention that notice of the public hearing was not published in time for December 8th. Staff therefore recommends rescheduling the hearing to December 15th. So I move to reschedule the public hearing to December 15th, 2025.
Thank you. Motion has been made by Councilor Johnson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Edwards. Any discussion on the item? Okay, roll call vote. Councilor Edwards?
Yes.
Councilor Parks?
Yes.
Councilor Anan?
Yes.
Councilor Gale?
Yes.
Councilor Hewitt?
Yes.
And Council Johnson?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0. Moving on to item number 10, that is new business this evening, and there is one item, and that is A, to the amendment to the Chapter 169 recreational vehicle ordinance. Administrator Prescott?
Thank you, Mayor. This was brought to our attention back in the summertime, and we were asked to take a look at it and bring it back. Since then, before Administrator Bohanko had left, I had a meeting with Councilor Edwards here, and we went over some red line changes that could possibly work for both the city staff and also potentially for the city councils. So David Toomey and I packaged those up, and we have sent them to you here for your review and your consideration. Basically, it would allow for a two-week permitting process, so a temporary permit, to have an RV that you use if you had someone traveling to your home. Do you have to meet certain parameters of the RV itself? We need to make sure that we monitor this closely if it is adopted. We want to know how many staff hours it takes to monitor, make sure that we're really on top of it. Our compliance planner has offered to do the initial monitoring for us, as far as how many people are tapping into these and what timeline, keeping all the timelines. But it will be something for us that we'll have to monitor closely. But we think we can do that at least on an initial basis and report back to council if there's any major red flags we see as we move forward, or if we're getting tons of these applications, we can certainly report that back as well if the council decides to move forward with this. We did put in certain parameters as far as the application process that one would have to undertake as well. And it would just really be an expansion of what we currently allow. Dave Toomey has flagged that we want to include a, an updated fee when we look at our budget for this season for the fee schedule to account for a fee appropriately for this as well. So we'd recommend bringing that forward either as part of this or separately as the budget process, because there's only going to be a couple months in between, most likely. I don't know if Director Toomey has anything else to add here, or if I left anything out, but that's where we're at with this.
Great, thank you anyone very much. Comments or questions? Council Edwards?
Yes, this had come up for me, because one of my constituents actually had a question about this. And there were many people who did not know that it's actually illegal to reside in your RV on your own property, save for a waiver if you have home construction. So, you know, in speaking with a couple of the other councilors, I thought to bring this up, because particularly in this time where people are trying to move and not to create a situation where someone is living in an RV for an entire year, but for visitors and whatnot, we just thought it would be practical and a way to help monitor usage.
Great, thank you. Anyone else? Council Hewitt, then Council Johnson?
Just for clarification, if somebody owns an RV and they have it parked in their driveway, no one's living in it, there's no additional fee for them, correct?
This, this is only relative, this change is only relative to having someone reside in the RV temporarily for 14 days. Yep.
Thank you. Council Johnson?
Thank you. Yeah, I think it overall looks, looks good at this stage. I think it achieves at least what my goal was, which was allowing for a temporary use in the event, you know, you have someone that's displaced, and your family or whatnot. But the only question I have is related to electrical service under item four. Just curious how we're defining that. I'm aware of a situation that someone was living in an RV in my ward, and all summer long, I was walking by with my son, and it was fairly late in the evening, 8 o'clock, and my son kept asking me, oh, why are they mowing their lawn? And for the longest time, I was like, oh, that's kind of strange. And then I decided to walk down that street, and I realized they're running a generator, and they had been running that generator all the time. So I would hope that we're, you know, looking to, you know, limit generator use for electrical service if, if that's not included in electrical service.
We can get back to you on that.
Council Anan?
Could we simply consider, in this particular caveat, Section D, that we remove the need for independent electrical service? If you're sitting next to your, your brother's house, why can't you plug into his power?
I'll rely on Director Toomey if he has any comments there specifically, but we want to make sure that the right permitting would happen for something like that.
Sure.
Most RVs would be plugged into the house.
But the way this reads, that would not be allowed.
It should be allowed, yes.
That, that's, I'm just, I was making that point on this.
Because it's so temporary, trying to put a service up is unrealistic, so basically plugging into the house.
Sure. And that would make sense. You were duplicating the language from the other two permitting requirements. If we could maybe revisit that and just adjust that, that might make that a bit more palatable and address, Nate, your question.
We just want to make sure they have power in the-
Absolutely, yep.
Yeah, I agree. Reading the words "self-contained" makes it sound either generator or battery operate, you know, battery use. So maybe a little more clarification as to terminology on that. Do we currently have a structure for penalties if they, we find that they are living in it longer?
It's the same penalty for most violations on the code. It addresses that chapter that goes to the violations.
Okay, perfect.
Yeah, that's Section 1-18 of our current code.
Council Edwards?
Yeah, thank you. I had forgotten to mention this. I was, in Section D, it says, based on the standards of 1 through 5, but you have six standards there. So I didn't know if that was just a copy error or the sixth lot, section, the applicant for temporary sitting of a recreational vehicle was not included in the 1 through 5.
Yeah, we'll take a look at that also.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Great, there is no motion needed this evening. Council Edwards, you are the council liaison staff appointed to that. Are you okay with that?
I am.
Resource, excuse me.
I am, I am very happy.
It's on time tonight.
I'm very happy about that. Yes, I'll take that on. Thank you.
Okay, so we will see this back at a future date with some of the items clarified and corrections. All right, moving on to item 11, that is administrative update. Administrator Prescott?
Thank you. I do have one additional thing to add here. We have a limited snow removal parking ban I was asked to mention. It is beginning at 9:00 PM on Tuesday, December 9th until 7:00 AM on Wednesday, December 10th. It'll be on the following streets. There's a long list, so just bear with me. Main, Elm, Beach, Common, Cross, Cuts Avenue, Free, High, Middle Street and Middle Street Extension, Park Avenue, Pepperell Square, Pleasant, School, Store, Thornton, and Water. Please do not park on any of the listed streets in the posted timeframe. Cars parked on the listed streets in the posted timeframe are subject to ticket, tow, and storage fees at the owner's expense. And you can see a map of the public parking options and sign up for email notifications on our webpage at sacomaine.org/parkingban. Just two more updates here, one of them on the spur jetty. The U.S. Army Corps of Engineers New England District had a successful bid opening for the spur jetty contract earlier this week. Mohawk Northeast, Inc. was the low bidder. The Army Corps is currently working with the bidder and performing all necessary administrative work that they hope will result in a successful award by early January. The Army Corps will be providing another update to the city around the 12th of December on the progress toward award. And we have our Holiday Festival and Parade of Lights. A reminder to please join us December 13th for the Holiday Festival and Parade of Lights. The daytime festival begins at 9:30 AM with Storytime with Santa, live carolers on Main Street, winter craft activities, the festival trees at the Saco Museum, and other holiday activities, before the Parade of Lights begins at 6:00 PM. Visit sacomaine.org and sacomaine.org for the complete schedule of activities, including the parade route and temporary road closures and detours during the events. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Any questions or comments for the administrator? Okay, moving on to item 12, that is council discussion and comment. Any councilors wishing to speak? Okay, I would like to throw out a personal thank you to Harbor Master Pendleton. Yesterday, we had a pier tree lighting. We had a small tree placed down on the pier, and residents and community members all got together, and we had, there was a bonfire, and Harbor Master Pendleton cooked up hot dogs and hamburgers that were donated by Hewitt's. The Camp Ellis General Store provided hot cocoa and cookies, and it was just a great afternoon. So if anybody would like to stop down to the pier and visit and see the tree and bring an ornament, all of the ornaments are personally donated by residents and community members, and you can place a special ornament on the tree. So make an effort to stop down and see it. Okay, item 13 is adjournment. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion made by Councilor Edwards. Is there a second? Second by Councilor Johnson? Roll call vote. Council Edwards?
Yes.
Councilor Parks?
Yes.
Council Anan?
Yes.
Council Gale?
Yes.
Council Hewitt?
Yes.
And Council Johnson?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn passes at 6:00 at 7:06 PM. Thank you, everyone, and have a great night.